Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 School Committee Meeting. I'd like to remind you of these meetings are audio and video recorded. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Sharon Fairbanks.
Robert Mullin.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Anthony Tenerola.
Paul Mitchell.
Becky Stanton.
Jerome Messina, Business Administrator.
Kenneth Moore, Student Representative.
It all rise from pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll seek a motion to approve the November 19th, 2019 School Committee on Executive Session Minutes. Executive Session Minutes are not to be released at this time.
Make that motion.
I have a second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six zero zero. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, we've three items on the correspondence tonight. The first one is I did receive a letter from Local 1703 to begin negotiations. As you know, that's our maintenance and custodian group. As directed at the last meeting, we are scheduled to begin negotiations with the administrators assistants in January, so if you'd like, I can send them a notification that they'll be after that group and we'll keep them kind of in the loop until we know exactly when that will be.
Yes, please.
All right. The second update, I will not steal Mr. Tenerola's thunder, so the correspondence, school building, three correspondence, the email that was sent to the school building committee is in your drive for you to review, but I know that Mr. Tenerola's going to talk about it tonight. And the third piece of correspondence is my every other month update around goals and benchmarks and key action items, so that is also in your drive for your review. I welcome your feedback on that.
Excellent. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Share the success. KJ?
Okay. So to start things off, we're going to start with TES. So the students and staff made the best of all the snow they got. They enjoyed making snowmen and playing all snow during recess. Additionally, the school conference hosted a teamwork stripes assembly for students in the lower elementary school. In the assembly, students learned about the importance of working together. TES is also super proud of its town, or tuneful Tigers that performed at the Festival of Trees and a superintendent's luncheon. They performed holiday songs while getting everybody in the holiday spirit. And then, TES will help to make Carlos, a six-year-old boy from Worcester awaiting a heart transplant wish for Christmas cards, come true by sending over 900 Christmas cards to him. And they wanted to give a special thanks to Carbon Colors for supplying the cards for the students and staff to use. And then, finally, they also wish everyone a happy holiday season. From TMS, they hosted a book fair, or yeah, they hosted a book fair from Thursday, December 5th to Monday, December 9th. Additionally, they put a box in the school where students could write compliments about other students and place them in the box. And on Thursday, December 12th, they will pick one student from each grade that gave a compliment and the students will win AMC tickets. The theater team will be going carolling at Bryanston Nobles on Wednesday, December 11th from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then, the eighth grade at TMS has been working on a STEM project for last semester and they're continuing into this trimester where they're trying to build tables. Additionally, the art club is working on painting tiles so they can decorate the ceiling of the art room at TMS. And then finally, this was going on at THS. December students a month were chosen and announced, so congratulations to students Josh Fairbanks, Allison Weed, Genesis Torres, and Phil Sutherland. THS continues to support adoptive family by collecting money and food items in association with the National Art Society. On Sunday, December 8th, students involved in the Give Kids a World program embarked on their trip to Florida to volunteer at the village. And Tinsborough Football Team ended their season with a win over Grand Central in the Colonel's Cup on Thanksgiving. And finally, winter sports and clubs are entering full spring, or swing, with winter track, work at club, basketball, dive, and more, all beginning.
Thank you. Excellent. Subcommittee update. Paul?
The Policy Committee met tonight and we reviewed four policies and we would like to reaffirm, and three of them had no changes. Policies 1.2, 1.12, the subcommittees, Policy 3.5, the evaluation of Superintendent's schools, and Policy 4.8, school choice. All these policies, there's no changes to them, so we'd like to have them reaffirmed.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm.
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six zero zero.
That's it?
Thank you. Personnel. Notification of new hire. Want to welcome Dale Fornia, a second shift custodian at the high school. And we have a request for maternity leave for Kate Ramsey, also at the high school. She's due the end of January. Good luck to her. Unfinished business. Tony?
Yes. You all got the email from Dr. Flanagan, but two weeks ago, two weeks ago today, I believe, we went down to Boston to the MSBA office and met with them. It was Dr. Flanagan, Dr. Branko, myself, Mr. Messina, Hillary Winistone from the Board of Selectmen, Matt Hanson, and Justin, and I don't remember Justin's last name, but it's just Salzberg. Salzberg. To meet with them in regards to our enrollment certification. Their numbers were pretty much what our numbers came out to be, what we were projecting, which is 422 students. They use a 10-year projection with projects and everything, which is really dead onto what we use with the New England School Development Council. So, that was nice. A few things, questions that we asked while we were there was would a new high school be possible?
They will not touch a new high school building with less than 600 kids, so that is out of it. The middle school construction, it's 400-plus kids. They are going a lot with the model of the middle, senior, high school, which would be a possible addition onto the high school. So, they wanted to do, they were kind of pushing us towards a junior middle high school. Dr. Flanagan was very adamant about keeping our middle school model the way it is today, and we believe the residents of Tinsborough would like to keep the middle school model. I think it's important to us. So, in February of 2020, they will take our projected enrollments and they will vote on it at the MSBA to really officially accept us into the program and go forward with the project. So between now and then, there's really not much that the school building committee will be able to do. Once we are accepted into the program fully with that, then we'll work with the OPM to start the project. So, we're pretty excited about it.
Sir Anthony, I missed Dr. Flanagan.
The only thing I want to clarify is the, is that they're pushed for a seven to 12 school. They seem to really want us to go in that direction, and I think we pushed back a little bit saying that a seven to 12 school wouldn't be feasible for us because we would have to add buses for an elementary school if we were pre-K to six. We don't believe that our elementary school could handle the sixth grade as well right now, and I think going to a seven to 12 school brings us right back to 2000 and our conversations then when we were a seven to 12 junior, senior high school. And though it would still be a middle school model, we need it to be a six to 12 middle school because I think the history of this community suggests that's probably the most appropriate move. So, they, I think, relented on that, and we should be receiving a certification letter from them, I would say within a week or so, they said within a few weeks, that will detail exactly what they will approve and reimburse from the MSBA for part of the feasibility study. So, it's coming down the pipeline any, anytime. So, all good, all exciting, all good.
Do they have, if I could, their elementary school numbers did not include our full day kindergarten either, right?
Correct. They did include preschool.
Preschool, full day.
You need 100 kids.
Yes.
So as they were looking at our elementary school, which was designed for 900 students, they said, well, there seems to be a room, but they weren't factoring the pre-K, which is over eighty-five kids right now, so. So it's exciting.
Did they do a projection on the high school in tenures?
They did, actually, on the whole district?
Yep.
Yep.
And it didn't move much, I think, on the high school.
No.
So it's still under 600?
Significant.
Correct. Yes, yes, definitely.
The next step for the building committee would be to hire the?
OPM.
OPM. Can we go out to get resumes or anything on that?
We can't do anything without asking the MSBA first. So we're going to go right by their step. They'll, they'll essentially tell us, this is the checkmarks we need to hit. They'll give us the paperwork, the templates, and everything that we use to put out, and then they'll actually send us a list of MSBA-approved certified OPMs that we can select from. So we have a little authority or decision-making within their stable, but really, we have to look at their stable of project managers.
But we can't do that until after February, is it?
Right. Because the, once the February vote happens, then the final piece of the eligibility phase is the FSA, the feasibility study agreement, which a time manager signs and MSBA. So that last signature document says, okay, we're in the pipeline now. So I think that's how they budget it, so they want the timeline to fall that way. So it's exciting. That's where we are.
Yep. Thank you. New business.
Mr. Chair, you know, we've had, you've had each school come in, they've been a part of the game, and I will say last but not least, I will say last but not least, is our technology department. So Mr. Piper's here to provide an update of where we are with technology in the district, where our plan is, our vision, and where we're going. I'll just say that in the past three or four years, we've made incredible, incredible strides in technology and integration in the district, so that's, so we're testament to Derek for the work he's done. So, that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Derek. I believe Dr. Branko will jump in at some point during this presentation.
Sounds good. Thank you. So I think it was exactly one year ago when I gave you the 2018 update, so a lot's happened over the years, so I'm going to give you a high-level update, and I'd be happy to dive into the weeds if you want to later. Have you, or may I have to keep saying this?
That's all I'll watch you.
So our technology infrastructure, which is our backbone of everything we do here at Tinsborough Public Schools, remains pretty solid. Over the summer, we upgraded our phone system on the Norris Road campus so that our connection is now coming in over the internet and not over the staticky copper lines that every time it rained, we couldn't make a phone call or take a phone call. So that's been a huge improvement. We're also seeing, I think, some savings on the back end because we were able to eliminate some redundant numbers. The way that works now over the internet is you can have multiple calls coming into the same line as opposed to having one line for the main number at the high school, then a second rollover number, then a third rollover number, which we were paying for each of those numbers before this new system. So the new system's been great, and it allows us to expand further because it's an IP-based system. Servers and firewalls, we continue to obviously upgrade our servers, make sure we're on top of the latest security patches. Our firewall is blocking all kinds of nastiness from coming into our building and affecting our computers and the student computers, especially here at the high school. If you recall, I think it was two summers ago, we rolled out that new firewall, and it's been rock-solid. Updated the firewall at the elementary school this year to just a newer version of the one that we're using over there. In terms of bandwidth, we noticed that with more and more devices coming into our schools, whether it's BYOD or students with phones, a laptop, and maybe a tablet, and teachers and administration, we saw a need to increase our bandwidth again this year, which we did. So we're in a really solid place right now at the high school. We went from, and these numbers might not make sense, but that might not make sense. We went from 300 megabits per second to 980, so we tripled the amount of internet coming into this campus here. At the elementary school, we went from 150 to 300, so doubled it over there. And there's not as much need over there right now based on the amount of devices they have. I don't think many K through five students are coming in with a cellphone in their pocket. So we're in a really good place there. And then data security, I think it was last time I was here, Mr. Mullin asked me about our data security, what happens if we have a data breach? And we took that seriously because it is a big topic. Everything from little viruses on computers to ransomware to someone hacking into our system, we see the news all the time that this happens. So I've been working closely with our network admin over the past few months and some during the summer to make sure that our systems are as rock-solid as they can be. Nothing is 100% secure, but we have a nice backup and recovery plan, especially for our key server, which I'll talk about in a minute, is the Power School data, which is basically the data for our entire district. So that is, is really secure, and we feel like we're in a really good place with that. As well, we received a checklist called the Data Breach Response Checklist from the Department of Education. A lot of it doesn't apply to us, but a lot of it does, so we're kind of weeding through that and taking parts of that and making our own checklist, what happens if something really bad happens? What do we do? Who do we notify? So, we feel like we have our head around that and we're in good shape. Technology infrastructure, so while we do have a handful of iPads, some IMAX, and Mac Labs, and a Windows Lab here at the high school, our device of choice still is the Chromebook for many reasons. It's a solid device, it's economical, and it does everything we need students to do outside of specialized programs. At TES, there's some numbers here, we have roughly 335 devices, give or take. Three through five, the upper elementary have classroom sets in science and math. There's also shared carts in the upper elementary. Lower elementary, which we're seeing more requests for technology, they have a couple shared carts right now, and they also utilize the two labs that are there. At the middle school, we went one-to-one this year, which is very exciting, so every student now, when they come in in the morning, they've been assigned a Chromebook in their homeroom that's in their own little slot in a charging cart, and they'll take it out and use it for the day and bring it back, put it back in there at night to charge for the next day. It's been hugely successful so far. Middle schoolers are a little rough, so minimal damage, but we have a good repair crew that has been repairing the Chromebooks when needed. So that's going well. THS, the BYOD initiative, second year, and it really is just what we do now. We don't even call it a program anymore or an initiative, it's just, this is our BYOD environment. It's just another tool that we're allowing kids to bring into school, and it's going well. Last trimester, last year, we did a survey to the students and teachers to get a feel for how many students are bringing devices, what impact is it having? And we recently just did the same survey after trimester one this year, and, I mean, I know only the seniors left last year and the freshmen are new, and everyone in the middle is kind of the same, but the numbers in terms of how they feel the engagement is affected, increased. Likewise, the numbers stayed the same for the amount of students who reported that they're not bringing a device. So last year was about 8.9% of those that responded, this year was 8.2%. And as we discussed, you know, when we rolled this out, we have 60-ish Chromebooks right now in three different carts throughout the school, and it's pretty wide open. Students know if they don't have a device that day for one reason or another, or any day, they can just go borrow one from the carts and return it at the end of the day. Going well there. So Power School. Power School's our student information system. Like I said before, with the security, this is where pretty much all of our data resides regarding families, regarding students, scheduling, grading, it's our lifeline. It currently integrates with over a dozen different systems, and that's either directly connected to different systems or we're taking data from Power School and feeding other systems. So you'll see things up here like our curriculum for science and math in the elementary and middle schools. You'll see Edge Annuity, which is a learning management system, our nursing software, all sorts of things, obviously grades and schedules, our help desk. So it's very important. So, we keep looking at Power School and saying, okay, this is very important. The data has come a long way since the time I've been here in terms of cleaning it up and getting it to a point where it's entered properly. So we say, how do we expand it? That's our, that's our goal now because it's always nice to have everything sort of in one place. And, we're getting there. I know Student Services is currently looking at Power School with the possibility of switching their third-party site, document management system, and IEPs and all that, over to Power School. So again, just having all in one place is going to be huge. And then there's the parent side of Power School, the parent portal, which I'm sure parents in this room have used. Parents currently go there for grades and attendance, history, they can sign up for email notifications for grades and assignments. We do our athletic registration form through the parent portal, and this year, we rolled out district-wide the yearly student information form, update form, online through the parent portal. And as you see here, 90% of the district actually completed that form online. So you can imagine the time and resource savings alone that that one form, which I think was multi-page, I'm not sure, that had to go out in paper copy home, people would get it back with, you know, changes written in, somewhere have to take that, you know, match it up with the database and make changes. So now, having it all automated, it's just been a huge savings and a huge efficiency. All 16, roughly 1,670 students, all but seven, and kind of digging into that, some are newer students and whatnot, have at least one parent portal account set up. So, it is being used, and there's a ton of things we can do with parent portal, such as online documents. So we've talked about this for some time, and we have a system, a system in place that integrates with Power School called SWIFT K-12 that allows us to post PDF version documents online. So what we're going to do, and I'll get to the timeline on the next slide, is roll out online report cards, which again, we've talked about for some time. So parents will, a report card time, and then of course, you know, we can expand on that with progress reports, any other documents that may go home to parents, whether we want parents to go and retrieve, and all be there in their parent portal personalized to their family. So starting with report cards, as you'll see here, I can go back one more. On the left, there's simply just another icon called Swift Reach SWIFT K-12, and in there is where all the documents and files for that family and for each student, there's student tabs for the family if they have more than one student, will go to retrieve their online documents. And there's things on the back end we can do in terms of how long will documents stay up there, you know, they could stay up there forever, or we could have a time limit on them. So in terms of timeline, January 17th, when trimester two progress reports go out, an email communication will go out to families explaining the details of the rollout. They will now have the ability to post online documents to parent portal, and we want to do that to be more efficient and allow them to go pull the information. Principals will follow up, and communications will come from us as well between January and March, just reminding them about parent portal and how we're going to start utilizing it more and more. March 13th, when try-two report cards are sent home in paper format as well, you know, continued with paper format, we're also going to post them to parent portal. So duplication there, just to get parents used to seeing it on parent portal, but of course, they'll get the paper as well. And then trimester three, our goal is to simply post all report cards to parent portal and then ongoing as well. So, with our physical technology in a solid place, we continue to look at how these tools that we have are being used. We created the digital learning specialist position to ensure that we're not just implementing technology to keep up with the Joneses or to keep up with other schools, but we want to ensure that these tools are really being used for their maximum educational potential. So our digital learning specialist, Tom Varnum, continues to work with teachers at all levels to enhance their pedagogy and, you know, enhance the learning experience for our students. What Tom did this year is he sent out a survey to teachers to get feedback from them, you know, what, there's so much stuff out there, what is it that you really need in terms of professional development? Because they continue to say they absolutely want professional development. So based on that survey result, Tom has created a series of modules, both online and self-paced and also job embedded and hybrid, which Dr. Branko and I will talk about a little more what that means. But this will allow teachers, based on their feedback and what they were interested in learning, to go online, take these modules, and work with Mr. Varnum, and also be able to earn professional development points towards their recertification. So that's always a huge, huge bonus for teachers when they're doing professional development is to be able to get those PDPs to then apply to their recertification. So these modules are not live yet, they'll be rolling out after the holidays, they're all created, but timing-wise, we wanted to wait till after the holidays.
So if you look at the first one on this page, one of the things we learned is that all teachers wanted to learn in different ways, so the information we gathered is that the survey was some people wanted asynchronous web-based opportunities, which is how a lot of graduate students run, a lot of certification programs are run in other industries. Some people don't like that, they want to be in the room, tangible with another person, touch and feel the product, and have someone model it and show it to them, and then there's a third type of person who kind of lives in both worlds. So, we purposefully developed three different types of delivery mechanisms for the professional development. They're going to have the second half of the year to meet all three of those learning styles. This first one is to help us K to 12 maximize the G-Suites for education. There are seven major components of the G-Suites, so Tom has built an online course that will step each person through the seven modules, and at the end of every one, there's an authentic product that will then be able to be used in their classroom with their students as part of their instructional practice or their management practice. And so as the teachers step through that, they can take as much time as they need to go through these modules, they can always phone a friend and ask someone who's already done the work to support them or bring Tom in if they need to. But in general, this is meant to be asynchronous, self-paced, and they end with seven different types of products that they can do in the classroom to benefit students' learning, and that'll be a 15 PDP program that they can do.
Yeah, just going back to that one, just as a side note, over the Thanksgiving holiday, I said, oh, I'm pretty darn good with the G-Suite products, I'm going to whip through Mr. Varnum's module here. I haven't finished it yet. Some of the modules are, he says it'll take one to two hours for each one, he's not kidding. He has assessments built in, it's not just watching the video and saying, did the module? Halfway through the video, you have to answer questions before you can continue, you have to get the questions right, you have to create documents that you then submit to him through his Google Classroom, and he checks them, so it's not light, it's actually, it was work. And like I said, I haven't done all seven yet, but I will.
So this next one is really capitalizing on what's happening out in most of the industry professional development as we started this concept of job-embedded professional development, meeting employees where they are, on the floor, in their offices, in their jobs, so that they're getting authentic training instead of sub-separate. So the way we're doing this now is, he has built three unique professional development opportunities based on the survey data, all different tools and products that we can use at different age brackets and different subject areas with kids in the classroom for a variety of reasons, instructional, assessment, management, all the different lenses that we can, we can use that the product's for, and we're going to rotate coverage throughout the school days, so each one of these modules will meet for about a month, month and a half, and so the goal is every single teacher K to 12 will have taken these three professional development modules between January and June, so that by the end of the year, we've really, really built our capacity. He's going to cater each one of these to the appropriate grade level, some of the products listed are more six to eight or nine to 12, and if that's true, he'll supplant those with some other products that are more appropriate for kids. lenses that we can, we can use that the product's for, and we're going to rotate coverage throughout the school days, so each one of these modules will meet for about a month, month and a half, and so the goal is every single teacher K-12 will have taken these three professional development modules between January and June, so that by the end of the year, we've really, really built our capacity. He's going to cater each one of these to the appropriate grade level, some of the products listed are more six to eight or nine to twelve, and if that's true, he'll sup, supplant those with some other products that are more appropriate for K-5. So the highlights and the hyperlinks in the module will be changed depending on the grade level. But the goal is to meet teachers where they are during the school day, get us all together in a learning moment, couple times a month in, in the classrooms. So we're very excited for this one, this is a couple of years of trying to find a way to really do this during the school day and embed it into the work, and so this is, we're excited to kick this one off and really track the progress on this particular one. So the, the three concepts are here. The last one is a really fun one that's going to hopefully be personalized to the best of our ability, that's the one where people really wanted something personal, they wanted to be able to meet with him one-on-one and say, listen, I've got this great lesson, I need something to push it over the top, I need it to be tech, I need, I need to add something to it, it's an older lesson I've used, how can I twenty-first century it up a little bit? So this is an opportunity where they reach out to him, it's basically a personal technology planning partner, so you're working on something next week for a lesson or a unit, you schedule time, he will come to during your planning period, could be one or two, depending on how long it takes, he plans it, he techs it up, he trains you on it, and then if you request it, he will actually go in and co-teach that lesson with you for the first time through it to make sure you know what you're doing. And then there'll be a gradual release so that the next time you roll that out with your next group of kids, you're on your own. So excited to get this off the ground, Tom spent a lot of time culling the landscape, so to speak, that's what he does a lot, is he goes out there, does a lot of research to find out what best practices are in place and what tools are in place, and now it's kind of time for us to take that information and drop it into the hands of the teachers. So excited to see what happens between January and June with the, with the tech PD.
Okay, so to refresh your memory, in 2016, the DESC came out with the Digital Literacy and Computer Science Frameworks. Last year, as a team, we're including our STEM teachers, the library media specialist, Dr. Branko, myself, we, we unpacked the standards, we looked at our current computer science and tech offerings, we researched what other schools were doing and how they were approaching the ELCS frameworks, and we explored a whole bunch of curriculum products that are out there, both free and/or paid. This year, as we continue to work towards our implementation plan to ensure that we have up-to-date programming and resources, an opportunity kind of fell into our lap when Dr. Branko and I were down at MasQ Conference this year at Gillette Stadium, we, we were in a session related to the frameworks, and it was led by Deborah Bover, who is out of UMass Boston, correct me if I get this wrong, she's out of UMass Boston, she heads up a nonprofit there, the VATEC, which is the big long thing at the top, Broadening Advanced Technological Education Connections. She works sort of under the umbrella of another organization called CS4All, which again, is their goal is to, to just embed computer science and technology coursework, coursework and whatnot into schools. So in talking with her after the session, she mentioned that her organization has been funded, in part by Dell, I think Dell gave almost a million dollars to this initiative, and they're offering free two-day implementation planning workshops for school districts to tackle these frameworks and to figure out how to move forward, because a lot of the districts are kind of in the same, same place of, of how do we do this? How do we get this into an already busy day? What resources do we need? What curriculum do we need? So happy to say that in January, the team again, our STEM teachers, digital, the, the media specialist, Dr. Branko, myself, are going to this two-day planning workshop led by her, that utilizes a framework called SCRIPT, which I don't know if it's in this big long slide what that stands for, it does. And the five key concepts down below that it's going to hit upon is the leadership, teacher capacity and development, curriculum and materials, partners and community. So we're expecting to get a ton out of this and, and further our plan on how to move forward.
So the goal, yeah, the goal coming out of these workshops is we will come out with a draft plan that will inform our ability to put in programming, resources and staffing that will put us right on par with the other school districts who are already moving forward in computer science. More robust computer science programming, six to twelve, more legitimized coursework that has pathways all the way through, and then introductory computer science work at the K-5 level that includes everything from digital footprint to online safety to resources and research, and then it will be scaffolded up. So it will take place once a week in the, in the rotation at the elementary level, and then as they come to middle school, it'll be most likely part of our Unified Arts rotation, and then when they come to the high school, it will be more embedded in robust coursework. And so we have seen it for about a year in our head, but we're excited by the opportunity to work with Deborah. So as we were at the conference, Derek kept paying attention to her presentation, and I logged onto her website and applied for the grant in real time, so by the time she was done giving her presentation, we had already put in for the grant. So we were kind of double-dipping on the information in that moment. So she came out, what we forgot to say, she came out in October on our half-day, our very first professional development day of the year. Again, it was one of those just perfect timing things where we sat with her after her presentation and kind of monopolized her time and said, do you ever come out and give this commercial for school districts and, you know, before you do this work? And she said, absolutely. And she checked her calendar, got lucky that she was free, and she came out free of charge, and she led a three-hour session of sitting next to Derek and, and myself and the team, and really soup to nuts ran the team through what, what we need to be doing to make this work happen and ready for the start of next school year. So also coming out of the DESC at the exact same time is this Digital Literacy Now Grant. The grant is open until December twentieth, Derek and I will be shutting our doors soon. It looks like a pretty cumbersome grant application, we're going to try to dig into the grant, grant application and see if we can get any of that, almost $600,000, and that money is earmarked, earmarked to support districts' abilities to create new programs or expand existing programs. So we're going to see if we meet the criteria, we're going to see what kind of help we can get, and in combination with Deb's work and the grant and our regular curriculum review cycle, our hope is that we'll be able to talk to you at the end of this school year or minimally in August at the end as we get ready about where we're going with computer science. Paul.
And if you remember last year during the budget season, we were prioritizing computer, computer science teacher at that point, but we realized during the budget process that we were a little premature because we hadn't mapped out exactly what that position would look like and/or the through line through grade six through twelve. So that work is being done now, I know that that position is needed in this district, and I am foreshadowing for you, you will see computer science as one of our top priorities for next year, next year's budget.
So for my last slide, I wanted to kind of pull it all together, and I found this very interesting. So Google for Education partnered with a global team of researchers and analysts to examine evidence-based shifts in classroom education, so they just came out with this big report called The Future of the Classroom. They have a global report as well as a United States-based report, and they hit upon these eight prominent trends that they found happening today in, in K-12 education. And I thought this was very interesting because a lot of the stuff that we talked about either tonight or that we're doing or have done, really weaves in and out of these eight trends. You know, we, we do hit upon digital responsibility, we could do more. Computational thinking, of course, with the coding and the computer science, we're diving into that, collaborative classrooms with all the technology and the PD we're doing around that. So really, all of these, like I said, we weave in and out, but I, I like to look at this, I actually printed this out and put it up, as sort of a, a roadmap or a compass to stay focused on, okay, what are some of these big nuggets that we need to keep focusing on as opposed to, you know, keeping the lights on, which we, we do already and the lights stay on? So, so this is the stuff we need to really dive into more and continue to do more of. So just wanted to wrap it up with this slide, again, there's a whole large report, if you're interested, that talks about it, that's pretty fascinating. So the last slide.
A lot of good stuff in there. Thank you very much.
Sure, what questions do you have for me?
On the Power School, is there a mobile app for that?
There is a mobile, there is an app for that. And we do have, so on our tech, we have a technology page on our website now, and on there, there's a whole Power School section that has instructions for the mobile app, and you will need just a school code for it.
Okay, and that's available on the webpage?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, I want to add about Power School is, we have a separate, and you teased on a little bit, our Student Services program is looking to go, that Special Education program is looking to go into Power School. Right now, we've had E-SPED as our vendor, and E-SPED is our only standalone special education program, it's the only program that we have in the district that doesn't talk to Power School. So we're thinking about, we're looking at making a little investment to move that into Power School. E-SPED is ten years old, hasn't been updated, it's tired, and we need to go in a new direction. So we're, now Power School is a logical thing with all these plug-in, plugins and extensions, we are considering that, so we may be talking about that during the budget season as well. The cost is, is pretty similar, I think there's one, one-time startup cost, but I've got the annual fee is pretty similar to E-SPED, so it just makes sense.
And when we talk about using that parent portal for, for PDFs and documents, it really can become a robust repository for student records over time. So if we're doing progress monitoring with MAP assessments or MCAS scores or anything else, we can slowly over time get to the point where that is a place where you as a parent or us as educators can go for one-stop shopping to get that educational profile on a, on a student instead of having to pick it from different places.
Other question?
I have a question on, sorry. I just need retention policy on that, so if you have a student who graduates, they're no longer here after four, five, eight years, and this, these records are needed, can mom or dad call up and get a, an ID and log in and get, get access to it? And then how do you safeguard that data? You know, backups are good, but you replicate it to the cloud, is that an option you'll look at in the future? So it's no longer even here to bother with, you just keep it in the cloud and the copies are there? Just curious, you don't have to answer tonight, but? No, no, at a high level, the, the data today, we do have a physical server here today, they, Power School does have a cloud-based option, super expensive, but in terms of backups, we do local backups, but we also have cloud-based backups, so we have backups both locally and off-site for redundancy.
Perfect. It's.
Have you ever used the backup to make sure that you're backing everything up correctly?
We use it all the time to populate our test server, so that we have up-to-date information on our test server. So every so often, we'll take a backup of our live server, put it on our test server, just so that when people are trying out new things, they're actually looking at kind of real data as opposed to, you know, years, years-old data.
I'd encourage to, you know, do that because I've had an experience where everybody thought they were doing the right thing, and then when the problem occurred, no one had, there is an oops.
It's like oops.
Oops. Tell me about oopses.
It's no question, but thank you very much.
No problem.
For working on this, especially with the question that I had a year ago.
Took a year to get the answer.
I know, we spoke about it several times with, during that year, and, but thank you very much for getting back to us.
Sure.
Out of the eight trends you have there, where in the, all of them, where are we advanced on, where are we behind, what are we in the middle of?
Just off the top of my head, I don't know if we're behind, but I know digital responsibility and helping students, I don't know if manage is the right word, but we hear a lot both in school and out of school about technology and its effects on kids and distractibility and, you know, distractibility's always existed, but it just seems that it's a hotter topic now. So I think digital responsibility and, and use of technology and appropriate use of technology and appropriate times to use technology are things that we could probably hit upon more.
And that's going to be a huge outcome, K-5, with whatever programming we start to adopt, that tends, as we looked at the literature and then the research around what K-5 computer science looks like, there is a little bit of playing with technology, but a lot of it is that, what it's like to live in a digital world, what a digital footprint is, what cyber safety is, what stranger danger looks like in, in the tech world versus in real life. And, and getting to kids early and often with those messages that, once it's out there, it's out there forever, it doesn't matter that you think you deleted it somewhere. And so can we get that concept out there of being a strong digital citizenship and responsible of making sure that your digital persona mirrors your real-life persona as much as humanly possible?
And where, we have the online portal for the parents, is that information that we can share with the parents to hammer it home from two directions?
So yes, hopefully, as soon as these programs come out, if we roll these out carefully next year, my guess is there'll be parent, won't be parent letters, but it'll be digital more so, but think about other curricula where you get parent letters and updates, it'll be similar to that kind of work where you'll, hopefully, you'll get to see the language we're using and what the lessons were like with the little ones, so that you can support that at the house as much as you can.
Isn't that sort of a, a conduct issue too, is to?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, we. Yeah, we don't want to attack it through discipline, we want to attack it through responsibility and citizenship, you know?
Look at it like, you know, a teacher walks into the classroom and all the students are talking.
Yeah.
And, but when the teacher walks in, they should quiet down and pay attention.
Yes.
And it's that sort of framework that, you know, maybe there's a day or a week that you have, you know, you just cut out all the digital devices and figure out how.
Derek and I have gone back and forth over this, we actually just did this in my office today with real examples. It's, it's not the tool, it's the behavior. So many of us, it was not me, I will out myself now, but many of us had friends that were the bookworm kid, that in math class read the novel under the desk still. It had nothing to do with the tool, it was the behavior. The child was choosing to not pay attention to math, he or she was in love with the book in that moment. So really, it's about letting kids understand that the right move there was to put whatever is the distractible tool away and to focus on whatever the task at hand is. It just happens to be that these are potentially more distracting to the untrained person than other things, is, is what many people believe. So we're trying to talk about behaviors, responsibilities, appropriate learning, and, and we see it at the middle school, we see kids quickly starting to use the Chromebooks appropriately, you walk in, you see a teacher who says they don't need them, the kids just close them. When one kid doesn't close them, it's no different than the kid who was doodling in notebook, you know, that kid gets redirected. I, I'm most concerned about the elementary school and making sure that we're setting a really good foundational base for safe, digital safety, responsibility and citizenship, so that when they get to use the tool as a learning device, they're ready to do that. That's, as a parent and as a teacher, that's really where I want us to focus on the young kids.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much, Derek, great presentation. You're welcome.
Awesome, thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At tonight's meeting, eleven bill warrants were submitted to the school committee, I do have them all back approved, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts, and for signing of payroll, in your drive are the last three payrolls, the two in November and the one that just happened yesterday, and those warrant numbers and amounts are in your drive as well, and that's it.
Thank you. School committee discussion, Ms. Ray Banks?
I'm all set, thank you.
One thing I'd like to touch on, something that KG mentioned earlier. The TMS Theater Program will be singing tomorrow night at Barnes and Noble's from six to 10 p.m. A portion of any purchases during that time will be donated from Barnes and Noble to help fund the theater program, so please come out. Here's some wonderful holidays singing and support the theater program, please. I'd also like to, since this is our only meeting this month, I would like to wish a very happy holidays to everyone and hope you have a wonderful New Year's as well.
Merry Christmas.
I'm good, thank you.
Did it?
I don't have anything, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, thanks.
Merry Christmas.
The Festival of Trees, our theater choir did show up and performed outside on the street, which was awesome, they did an amazing job. So that was very nice to all those who put on that Festival of Trees, thank you for that, because it was just a great weekend, I should say, and for a good cause, so. Merry Christmas to everybody, and we'll see you in January.
A couple of quick announcements, today we had our Merrimack Valley Superintendent Association Central Office Holiday Luncheon at Neshobetech, and Neshobetech was grateful on us to, to host us, but we, we brought in the Toonful Tigers today to impress 130 central office personnel in the Merrimack Valley, and if you could have seen the expression on the faces in the room, as these ten little girls are there singing, they were, they were a hit of the day, it was phenomenal. So thank you, Mrs. Gothier and the Toonful Tigers, they did a great job today. My second plug is completely self-serving, but the survey is out there for anyone interested in taking part in the Strategy for District Improvement Survey, to date, we've received 113 responses, which is great. I will do a final reminder tomorrow, and that survey will close next week. Again, that went out to all school community members, so looking forward to that. Beyond that, things are, things are winding down here, we're getting ready for the holidays, so everyone have a safe and happy holiday and happy new year, and we'll see you in January.
Excellent. Excellent.
Happy holidays, everybody, looking forward to the new year.
We have no need for executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All over the table? Opposed? Carry six zero zero, have a good night, everybody. Have a good night, everybody.